If anybody would care to come up, if you'll give us your name and your address, and we'll open up the floor for a public comment. Anybody care to come to the podium this evening?
Anyone.
Anybody at all? Okay. With that, we're going to close public comment. Next item is the consent agenda.
Move to the top is presented.
We have a motion and a second. This is the proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and our proclamation declaring October as Cyberstalking Awareness Month. And those will be posted. All those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Buckston?
Yes.
You are the main event.
I hope I can live up to that.
All right, thank you. I'm Ralph Buckston, Chairman of your Town of Nags Head Parks and Recreation Committee, reporting this evening on our draft plan, which we have prepared for you. And realize that you all probably haven't had a lot of time yet digest it, but we're just going to give you a brief overview of it and give you some highlights. Before I get into that, though, I'd like to recognize our committee members that are here tonight. If you all would stand on Recreation Committee members. Brian Weiner, Brendan Strom, Mark Cornwell, Dave Elders, Bobby Gentry. Thank you for coming out here tonight, guys. And also, the other people that could not be here are Katie Burgess, Marvin and Elizabeth Demmers, Molly Harrison, Kate Kozak, and of course, we've Cliff Ogborne and Bob Oaks also asserted on the committee. And I have to recognize Elizabeth Teague and Angelo Welch. They were the staff members. They were instrumental in keeping us on track and pulling it all together. And believe me, you wouldn't have this pretty document in front of you if it hadn't been for them. So, thank you very much, what you all did. We have a lively theme here on the front page, as you see on PowerPoint here, of live, visit, play, and thrive. We talked a lot about vision, mission, brands in our meetings. We really wrestle with this a lot. And we've got mission and vision statements and value statements and all in the report. But we really like how it's summarized in this live, visit, play, thrive theme in Nags Head. And we hope that's something that you'll continue for Parks and Recreation, but perhaps you can use it some other ways in the town where there's no pride of authorship. So, that's, we think, though portrays a lot of energy for what we're trying to accomplish. Okay? The planning committee, you all have, of course, appointed last winter. And there were 11 citizens representing a variety of background, ages, and interests on this committee. And so, we had a good, broad spectrum of folks. We had nine meetings over nine, eight months, excuse me. And those are just committee meetings. We had lots of subcommittee meetings also, in addition to those nine formal committee meetings. We, the committee really did their homework. They, you know, from day one, we identified what were the information that we were lacking, where we needed, that we felt like there were gaps. And we broke ourselves up into subcommittees, the Community Interaction, Youth, Older Adults and Facilities Committees. And we really looked at to see what was needed as far as survey information. The Youth Committee was very active early on. They even designed their own online survey, trying to reach out to the kids in the community and their parents. Did actually face-to-face interviews at the town carnival to get a lot of input there. So, the committee really dug in, a lot of background information, a lot of going out and visiting facilities, existing facilities in the town, seeing what needed to be done to improve them, rejuvenate them. Our Older Adults Committee looked at special needs of older adults and handicapped people in the town. The Community Interaction looked at how we can bring people in town together through events, through carnivals, and any other possible ways, concerts, that sort of thing, entertainment. And all of these committees summarized their findings, and they're in the report for you to look at. So, we formalized the results that we came up with. So, after looking at all the, what existed and how, what existed needed to be improved, we looked at also what the community was telling us we needed, new things. And we identified those, we researched them a lot more. And we've got appendix in the back of the report here to tell you, gives you a lot of that research information. And then finally, at the end, we developed our options, our objectives, if you will, under our goals, and we started prioritizing them. And we'll get some more to that here in a minute. The, getting back though for a minute on mission, excuse me, vision, mission, and We felt like it was important to have a clear vision and mission, and one that matched up well with the town's own land use plans and the vision that you have stated in that land use plan. So, we thought a lot about that. We really feel that Nags Head, Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the history and attraction of Nags Head. Nags Head attracts people who are interested in recreation, who, and conservation, and who are outdoor oriented, they're active, they're energetic. You know, it's pretty obvious, those of you who have business, there's a workout in the community, that our clientele here in Nags is different from Myrtle Beach or Virginia Beach clientele. People come here because they want to do things. They, they want to get out and bike and hike and fish and surf and play in the sound. I mean, there's, they really, they love the variety of activities that we can offer them here. And so, we feel like it's almost in our DNA, Parks and Recreation's in the DNA of Nags Head. The, we already have, of course, a lot of investment in infrastructure here in town, appealing to Parks and Rec. And the beach nourishment process this year, the project was tremendous in terms of enhancing our beach capabilities and what we're going to be able to offer out there. And we've got some ideas in the report about things that perhaps we can do on the beach that above and beyond what we're able to offer now. The, but we've got, my gosh, we've got Nags Head Woods, 400 acres back on the Soundside. We've got Jeanette's Pier. We've got Soundside Sport Capabilities, Galore with our water sports accesses and businesses. So, a lot is already existing here in the town. We're very rich. We're very fortunate that we have the natural resources and developed resources that we have. Now, all of these, of course, the attractions that we have, like I mentioned, really are a great draw to bringing tourists, visitors into town, our lifeblood, you know, tourists. And we benefit from that economically as a town in a lot of different ways. The, but in addition to that, our community also benefits, our citizens here benefit from having such healthy and active offerings. And it makes for a happier community. Hopefully, you see some of that. I'm sure you see some of the other also. But I think in general, people who come to live in Nags Head, they generally come not just to make a living, but in order to play and thrive here also. So, that's a great asset for the town. We, we feel like, you know, we can just tweak some things here in the town and, you know, improve certain, like I said, there are some things that need to be addressed in terms of maintenance and rejuvenation. And, you know, we could just do some marketing and promoting in addition to these improvements. But we wanted to reach higher, further. We want to, we feel that we've got capability in Nags Head to become a world-class destination for recreation, Parks and Recreation. We really, particularly for a barrier island or coastal type community, we think we're special. And we want to achieve a higher level than what we have right now in our offerings. And we think that that will come back to us meaningful economically and in terms of well-being to our community. So, you'll see the word world-class used in the document. And we're not just, that's not just pie in the sky. We really think it's achievable. I know, you know, you drive by Nags, Jockeys Ridge every day, and you see hang gliders out there. Well, I was, I was involved with that business, you know, 35 years ago. And we, when we started here, and had no idea what could be accomplished. But that's the world's largest flight school. The world, more people learn to fly, you know, in those sand dunes than anywhere else in the world. That's, that's pretty neat. And that's being recognized this week, by the way, with the Soaring 100 event also. So, we've, we've got some big goals. And we've enumerated those in our, in the document. Again, we want to serve all ages and physical abilities, including aged and handicapped. We want to create opportunities for our community to get together, to mingle, to enjoy, to be entertained, to create. So, we're, we're very excited about the opportunities we've got there. We naturally want to continue to improve our existing facilities. We've got some that we feel have been a little bit neglected and need to be put back in the limelight and improved. We've done a lot on the sound, excuse me, on the ocean this past year. And there's, continues to be a need to do things on the ocean side naturally. But we kind of put an emphasis on sound accesses because that came out again in our surveys, people wanting to do more on the sound side. The pedestrian and bike accesses and connectivities within our communities, that's something the town's already working on, the paths down the south Nags Head and the multi-use path on the bypass. And just want to cheer you on, keep that coming. That's a great project. We feel that we have got to look at opportunities as far as acquiring property for future town use and, or even just for conservation. We, we all know the boom bus cycles, the Outer Banks goes through. As far as land values right now, property values are down. And we've got some opportunities that are identified, again, in the report that we should be looking at. And these are, these are bigger decisions, you know, bigger money decisions. So, might not be able to do them immediately, but we should start, we should be planning for those opportunities because they could rapidly disappear as the economy comes back again. So, consider those to be very vital. And in fact, our plan, our plan at Denver is a lot of things that people want in the town. And you know, it's kind of hard to, to put all those in some of the resources, the existing facilities we have. We really, we need some bigger pieces of property that we could develop into true park centers. And then we also need some smaller community-type property, parks that, you know, maybe it's just a playground in the corner of a neighborhood. But again, let's, let's grab those while we have the opportunity. We also have some other ideas on what we can do recreationally. And we want to, again, have a plan, develop a plan of continuous implementation of our So, what's our strategy? Well, we've, in the short term, we've tried to identify some things that are low or no cost. They might take some time, some staff time. But we, we think these are things that you can easily handle if you commit yourself to them. As I've mentioned, we want to take care of what we have in the town. We need to rejuvenate some of our facilities. We want to take advantage of timely opportunities that we might have in terms of properties or other partnerships. We want to, there's some low-hanging fruit that we've identified. Some of it is just simple things like putting our sites on Google Maps or developing a community calendar, you know, let people know what's going on in Nags Head, interacting better with the YMCA and the county and what they're doing. So, those are some things that we feel like could easily be done. Not, no, I say it's easily, it's easily said and said and being done, but they're relatively low cost. We also have some key partnership opportunities in our community. And the Visitor Bureau is one, Dare County is another. The YMCA is just an incredible facility. I mean, we're so fortunate to be able to have that here in Nags Head. They already work with us on the skate park. There's other things I think we can explore with them. We have the new Jeanette's Pier, which is the North Carolina Aquarium. And they're, I've been really impressed with what they're offering down there. I mean, fishing classes, they teach how to clean fish, how to cook it even. And so, I think, I think there's a lot that can be done. And in fact, we're already using that facility down there. There's recently, Hatters was cut off. You know, they had some surf contests there and there was an international surf kayaking event there. So, that's a tremendous facility for us. Then looking at more mid to long-term items, this is where your capital improvement items come into play. Lot of, lot of things there that we can spend money on. And I'm sure you'll want to look long and hard at what you think is worth pursuing. And, but I, but I think that if we spread it out wisely over, you know, 10 years or beyond, then it can become manageable. And, and that's how we would like for you to look at it. You know, make, make this a long-term commitment, you know? Make this not just a flash in the pants here, make it something that we can systematically work at over a long period of time. And by doing that, the costs will become, be much more manageable, especially as the Okay. The, again, hitting the specific action items we can do, again, with the, the calendar of events, working the town website, Facebook newsletter, the maps on Googles and town, and town website to locate where our existing parks and water accesses are located. Partnering with the YMCA on the skate park task force, that's something that the YMCA wants to do. That facility is in some disrepair and attendance is down there quite a bit. So, they want to, they want to look at that with the town. We actually, fairly recently, identified, Mike Kelly came to us about working to rejuvenate the public tennis courts behind Kelly's Restaurant. And feel like that's something that should be done because it's there, it just needs to be rejuvenated. And it was, and was identified in the surveys that the town did as a need, you know, especially for our visitors. And then we've got some deadlines coming up to apply to NC DOT for a comprehensive pedestrian planning grant, and that's due in December. And also, Safe Roots to School Grant, which has more of a rolling deadline. So, those are short-term, immediate things that could be undertaken without too much cost, at least at this stage of it, the researching stage in some cases. The, and then looking a little bit further out, one to three years. The playgrounds at Whalebone, and that's a park that's in the planning stages now. And I believe you're looking for some grants for that. We also, Satterfield Landing, the soccer fields out there are very popular, heavily used, and there's a need to have playgrounds there. And also, the town park back towards Brithaven, that playground needs to be rejuvenated. Interestingly enough, somebody asked me the other day about, you know, gee, you know, what are you going to, can't town do something about that playground? And I, I, there's no playgrounds in the town. And I had just happened to have been to the Nags Head Elementary, and I saw the playground there. And I said, yes, there is. And, and this was a longtime resident, the town of Nags Head. And she didn't know that there was a playground at Nags Head Elementary. She was a grandmother, okay? Wanted to take her grandchildren someplace. And again, you know, we just need to identify and let people know about it. It's a beautiful playground. The, we, I mentioned putting the facilities on the map. We actually need some signage, though, some good signage. And there's some cost to that, but we've got that identified as more of a short-term priority. Our sound and beach accesses, we need to improve their access for disability and age persons. We want to continue, again, the development of the bike trails, multi-use trails on the Again, resurfing select areas on the beach road trail in south Nags Head, came up numerous times, falls under that, you know, taking care of what you got. Special event planning for Windmill Point, the Nourish Beach and other parks with partners where we can. And then, again, acquiring property or somehow gaining control of property for the benefit of parks, trails, and water access development. So, that's one to three years. Four years and out, I'm not going to go through that list at this point in time. It's enumerated very well in the report. We, we hope though you'll, you'll take some more time here at your leisure to, to look at the report. We need, my understanding is, we need to set a, a public hearing needs to be set by the board. And hopefully, you can, we can do that in December with the, with the goal of being able to adopt the plan by early January, if that's feasible, that fits nicely with some of the, the planning needs and budgeting process, which starts up shortly after that. So, we're happy, we're pleased with what we're able to present to you tonight, but we realize it's not, it's not a final product. We need community's input to it, we need your input to it. And certainly willing to adjust, adapt any, any parts of it. And we hope that you're as excited about this process as we've been. Really feel like this is an integral part of Nags Head, and we're excited to be, have been able to work on it. So, with that, how many questions you might have, I realize, again, you all have not had a lot of time to study it, look at it. But if you have any general questions about our process, what we went through, be glad to entertain those.
Any general questions for Mr. Buckston?
Just to thank Ralph and his committee for the hard work. I mean, I certainly appreciate it personally. It also brings to light a lot of things that we need to look at, we need to prioritize as far as I'm concerned when it comes to the immediate future, particularly, particularly the recreation facility on the Barnes Street, Town Park, whatever you call it.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're up here.
I did have a chance to go through it one time, but it's an awful lot of information. So, we do appreciate having.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of background, you know, to, to the recommendations. And so, we've tried to give you the benefit of the research that was done at the committee and staff level to help you, help you prioritize in your own mind what needs to be accomplished.
I do have a question. It may be more of one for Elizabeth, but I noticed there was something about a part of, we have a better part of ranking by having a recreation plan.
Yes. She can probably elaborate that, but apparently, you get points for having more community participation in the plan process.
Yeah, through the State Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant process, there are, there are. Through the State Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant process, there are, there's a scoring system that's enumerated, and you get additional points right off the bat for an adopted Parks and Recreation Plan. And then they're also going to look for how the grant application fits your planning goals.
Thank you. Time, any time limits on any of those? That's just in general? Is there a timeframe that that needs to be?
We'd like to have the plan adopted by January for the deadline for submission, which is mid-January, January 31st.
Okay.
January 31st. Additionally, the immediate action that we noted what, for the pedestrian, Comprehensive Pedestrian Planning Grant, that's a deadline that's coming up here pretty soon. And, and the fact that we've done this work already will make us competitive for that grant as well. So, I think just by having done this work, it could lead to other opportunities.
Elizabeth, the Safe School Route Grant Program, I know we kind of fell behind that before you came, or found out that all the money was used, that Kildon Hill's got all of it. Is there a deadline? Because there is a part of our multi-use path that would complete, that would fall in line with their guidelines. Is there a, I didn't see a deadline for that in here.
Very much so. The, the state is no longer giving demonstration or implementation grants out under the Safe Routes to School Program. However, they did provide each division of North Carolina, each Division of North Carolina Department of Transportation with some funding. And there is still some funding left in Division One. So, our plan is to get together with our division engineer and determine the best way to go about the process of bringing in the next phase for our multi-use trail. We brought this up actually with DOT when they were doing a safety study along US 158, and the fact that we have Naggs Head Elementary right there. We have all these wonderful neighborhoods right across the street. And theoretically, lots of, lots of students are within walking distance of the school. One thing about the Safe Routes to School Program is that it is a door-to-door kind of program. So, in addition to an extension of sort of build out of the multi-use trail, we'd also be looking at some sidewalk connections onto the school property, and probably some signalized crosswalks or improvements to existing crosswalks.
Okay, thank you. And I have one question for Ralph. You were talking about Ralph, the communication through various, you know, broadcast.
Media, alright.
Media. How, I, I think there is a, a more mature population here that doesn't, that isn't into the internet. So, and I think we've cut our newsletters down to, is it two a year printed in mail? The others, you know, through the internet. What is a really good way, if one does not have access to the, this?
Right.
I'm still fighting. No, but what is the best way to, to get? I mean, this grandmother did not know there was a playground at Naggs Head Elementary. And that just, you know, all schools had, well, had playgrounds when I was growing up. So, how do you get to people that do not have the, this media?
You know, the old-fashioned way, I guess, you know, you're getting on the phone, having phone networks, phone tree, that, that sort of thing to at least get people out to, to, in order to be able to organize them into some kind of communication structure. I mean, if you can get people networked so that they're talking to each other, working with each other, if we facilitate that process. We, we have, and, and I know it's a, it's a problem with the older population anyway, is people are lonely, you know, they get shut in, and they get really shut off. And so, we, we need, we, you, you need to reach out. We need to go the extra mile. The, in some cases, you know, you can train them also to use computers.
Karen, Karen has done a real good job with me.
There's, there's actually, there, there's, there's some history with that, even in my own family. Donna's dad, he was, was still using a computer when he was 90 years old. And he started, what, in his mid-eighties, I guess? Yeah. My mother, I'm working real hard to bring her along in the process, and, but as long as she's got the interest, you know, it's going to take a while, but, you know, sometimes it just requires some handholding. But I, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm real excited about the whole community interaction portion of our program, you know? Getting people out, you know, other houses, out of their communities, getting them together like we did with the carnival. There's so much we can do with that, that builds community spirit, that gets people talking, that builds life, you know, into the community. And, you know, you, you gotta use, I guess partly just with candy, you know? You've had the entertainment there, you have the right events. No, they'll come. Build it and they shall come. Because people are curious, and they, and they want a good excuse to mingle, you know, to get out. And golly, we sure saw it, saw it at carnival. You know, it was all ages there. It's a great, great event.
Thanks.
I think one thing that we could go ahead and do is start using some of our allotted time on Channel 20 for an Aggs Head Community Calendar. That's something that people do watch, is Channel 20.
That's true.
And that would be, the Recreation Committee could go ahead and put some of their stuff on Channel 20 to go ahead and get some interest from our community to come in and help with that.
You don't have to log in or do anything, you just watch.
We can also take the next, or as we progress along, the next printed newsletter and devote a lot of it to, did you know that we have this in Naggs Head? Of course, they can always call the town of Naggs Head to find out, you know, do we have this?
You're right, we're very fortunate to have such a wealth of resources that's hard to keep track of all of them.
It is.
Ralph, thank y'all very much.
You're welcome.
Y'all have done a superb job. Give us some time to digest it a little bit.
Thank you, and again, you know, the credit goes to our community and the staff supporting.
Well, thank you. I know there was an awful lot of time spent, gentlemen and ladies, and we will work hard on it, as hard as y'all did, I have.
Thank you, Ralph.
All it takes is money.
Money and some time. There's some, there's some free things in here, some things we can do for almost free.
Let me, let me just, because it was on my agenda, if I might just. Ralph, it's on my agenda to, to mention a couple of things, and one of them was to remind everyone about the Soaring 100 event. I was speaking, I was going to speak about that from the Tourism Board member. Would you like to elaborate on, I think it is a kickoff at Jockeys Ridge, it's some of the things that will be going on?
I don't have the calendar, there is a whole list of things, I wish I brought that with me. And Friday is a key day, because they're actually, Jockeys Ridge.
Public can't hear you.
The kickoff is Friday for the Soaring 100, and keys, some of the key events are being done at Jockey Ridge on Friday. There's some seminars going on in the park at the auditorium, and they're inviting, even Kitty Okites has invited some of the older legends of hang gliding to come back. I mean, these, these are people from all over the country, and I think there are going to be some interesting talks on that. And there's a dedication that afternoon designating Jockeys Ridge as a national soaring site, and that's being done by the Soaring Society of America. So, I think, you know, some kind of plaque that'll be dedicated for that. And then, there's a barbecue that night and some more entertainment and stuff at Jockeys Ridge Crossing. So, those are events that are going on in Naggs Head. And then Saturday and Sunday, there are events that are being focused at Wright Brothers Monument. Yeah, and there's displays there, NASA's going to be there with a display, one of the astronauts will be there, giving some talks. And they're going to have some equipment inside the pavilion there on display. So, should be interesting. There's a gala Saturday night, and they still have tickets to sell for that. Anna, you're a gala person, you like that, come on now.
Right, Ralph, I'll say that.
And then Sunday is, is the big wrap-up. They have some flight, actually some soaring demonstrations. I can't, I don't know the exact times of them, but they're actually, that's sailplanes that they're bringing in, that they're going to be towing up.
I can't remember either, and I, I failed to bring my sheet, and I'm not sure if the, if, if the newspapers that are printing and the ones that are online have that series of events, but certainly if they don't, and there's anyone interested in the audience, listening audience, I am sure they'd call the Tourism Board, don't you think?
Oh, yes. Or if you have a computer, Google Soaring 100, and it'll pop right up there.
And if you do not, call the Tourism Board.
Yes, call the Tourism Board.
At 473-2138.
Or Kitty Okites.
Or Kitty Okite, great. Okay, thank you for taking care of part of my agenda. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, ma'am. With the Board's consensus, can we go ahead and set a public hearing for that first meeting in January? That'll give us time to, everybody will have a chance to, to read it well, get public input then, is that? Because I think you're going to be done by, you're gone by 15 minutes.
I really would be gone. I appreciate you, and we can certainly approve it in January, and with the public having two months to think about what all the things that the committee left out that they want, I think January.
I don't think the committee left much out.
Well, I don't know. There might be a page or two. Then Elizabeth said that we would have time to still get that done before the end of the month, in January.
If we can get it adopted before the 31st, that would be good.
We'd, we'd have the public hearing at that first meeting in January, then the committee could meet and make any edits or changes that you may hear based on the public comment, and then you could approve it at your mid, would mean approval at the mid-month January meeting.
And y'all will take care of scheduling and all that good stuff? Thank you. Our next item is a review and adoption of revised Citizens Advisory Committee Charter. And I'm not, I hope we're not going to pull Perry from behind the camera.
No, no, we're not.
Mister Gentry, I hope you'll.
I will be addressing, addressing the item.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I promised Perry, at, at our last meeting, you know, we had our usual turnover, and Perry was elected as the chair, and I was elected as the vice chair, with the caveat that he's always going to be busy, so I might as well just plan on being here presenting whatever needs to be presented to the Board. We had some new members, lively, lively discussion. It always amazes me how the people out of town make a presence. And some of the people in town are out of town or unable to attend. And one of the things that we addressed was that one of our members has been on the committee for multiple terms beyond what is called for in the charter. And then we also, also always have issues with people that are active for a year, and then you lose them. Everybody has good intentions, but you know where we, they leave sometimes. So, one of the changes we'd like to recommend is that the regular term of office be reduced to two years, but for unlimited, for unlimited additional terms. It's not easy to find somebody that will be, you know, not just a volunteer, but be a active volunteer. Like we see that in every phase of, of the town. A lot of the other changes or redundancies, things that were moved to the, the proper areas where we thought they fit. We'd like to make it a requirement to the, if a member's unable to attend, that we know in advance. Of course, the quorum is going to be determined by the number of people that are, are present, that won't change. We moved from eight to, to eight, eight to, to under seven, that, except for the nominations of the Town Lightkeeper Award, which we do annually, as well as the Naggs Head Residential Architectural Award. Perry tried to make things, committee tried to make things a little bit more politically correct, may or may not need to be changed, and you could see some of that in changing chairperson to just chair, and, you know, those may be things you might not even want to address, but then again, you know, it does simplify things. A lot of the, the issues under eight were already addressed under other items. We'll continue, of course, to meet quarterly, but we're not going to recommend that it's on a particular second Tuesday or first Monday, mainly because you have holidays coming to play there also, although we'll announce them well in advance. We thought that, that, that would be a good change. And the joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and the Citizens Advisory Committee can be scheduled annually for the last quarter, but that doesn't mean it has to be at the October meeting. It can be done, you know, anytime during, during that quarter. And I think that really covers the changes. I'd ask my cohort, my, my chair, but he's busy right now. Any, any questions, concerns?
Questions for Mister Gentry?
Just one for clarification, Bob. The call to Michelle, I would, to say you cannot attend a meeting, now, is there a time period that you, you, you need someone to call and say, I can't make that meeting? I mean, with, is the day of the meeting, what happens if everybody calls the day of the meeting, you don't have a quorum? Do you want to put anything in there that you need to let her know by a certain time?
Well, it needs to be, you know, in, in, enough in advance to notify an alternate. And I would think, I would think that a week would be sufficient. But yeah, I think that's a good idea, to have a time in there. Just want to make it as effective as possible, because the input is a lot more valuable when everybody's there.
There, I think the changes as recommended are really good.
I do too.
Very productive.
Particularly the two-year, the two-year terms indefinitely.
I'd make a motion to adopt the changes as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee to the charter.
We have a motion on the floor. Second. We have a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Good work, sir.
Good work, Perry, thank you.
Witness you want to meet the board. What, what would y'all think about a mid-January meeting? Set, set that up for CAC?
Instead of the last quarter, we can do that.
Yeah, I think, I think there's enough latitude there.
I think there's enough latitude.
Is that, is it everybody?
It's fine.
Okay, we, we will look forward to meeting with the CAC at our mid-January meeting, and thank y'all very much, and congratulations on the, the new leadership post.
Mister Mayor, I have nothing to present tonight.
Thank you, sir, that's, that's a good attorney.
He's not, or he is keep.
No.
Yes, he is.
Mister Manager?
Will it make me a bad manager if I? I'll, I'll start off with the Beach Nurishment Project, a few things I did want to report on. We are coming to the We are coming to the end of the project. Both the Dodge and the Padre are still on site. They did not work today because of the conditions. They did not leave. They did not demob and go back to Norfolk. They are still on site, and we anticipate that sometime tomorrow they'll resume. They have, if you'll look, can you bring up the other, the, that one? Right now, when they come back, they will be at pumping near Station 624, which is at the southern end. This, this map was last updated on Monday. They've got about the last two blocks there, last two or three sections there to complete, and that will fill in that last gap. Section 624 is about eight to 10 lots north of Small Street, and they are heading in the south direction. And they'll stop pumping there at that, where the, right there. That's section 627, and that'll complete that section. When they're done there, they'll go back up, let's see, that's about section 605. And they'll go north from there. And they'll go all the way, that's where they'll finish, from that section all the way up to just about four lots south. Is that right? I'm sorry, they'll go up close to Soundside Road, beyond, north of Soundside Road, right up to section 570. And that'll, that will complete the project. That could be done with, within the next seven days. They have, as of today, there's still 138,647 cubic yards left remaining to be pumped. They are currently demobbing from the southern portion of town. They're getting the equipment off there, just south of Surfside Drive. Once they get that complete, which we hope will be done by the end of this week, we will close up, reclose that section of the beach. That is not a public access for beach driving, but because it's been a tough access to control because of all the activity with Great Lakes coming on and off, that section of the beach will be closed up when they finish demobbing. We have, tomorrow there'll be another construction meeting, and we're working through CSE to kinda put together what I would call a punch list, things that need to be completed, we need to go through and prioritize, or let Great Lakes know the accesses that do need to be closed. Obviously, Gray Eagle Street is gonna take some work to return that back to the state that it was. We know that there are some potential issues on private property where access was both on and off the beach, private, private portions of the beach. We'll have to address those. We, we, I do, at the next, at the meeting in November, I talked to you last meeting about the BENTIC monitoring. We're still waiting to get word of approval for the pre-nourishment monitoring, but I will have, I wanted to get the okay from the reviewing agencies that they were pleased with what CZR had done before I brought to you a recommendation on moving forward with the next two samples. But my plan at the November meeting is to bring forth, for your approval, to enter into a contract for CZR to continue the next two samples. I am hopeful, what the, what the, what the permit requires is that we have to do two post-nourishment samples. I am hopeful that the, the first post-nourishment sample will indicate that the BENTIC creatures have repopulated such that there's no need to do that second. So, we will condition the contract that if the second round is needed, then we'll enter into that. When we took the bids, we took it, we took the bids as a whole for the, for the pre-nourishment and the two post. So, we've got the bids to be able to do that. So, I'll be bringing that back to you at the November meeting. We do wanna go ahead and so that we are, so that the post surveys are the same, coincide with the same months of the pre-surveys. We need to go ahead and get that done in November, if at all possible. If you'll pull up the next, the, what we've got left in the contract, this will show you the, the contract amount of, with Great Lakes, the $30,184,000. We've made five payments. They have sent us five invoices, which total up to just over $24 million. We anticipate two more invoices, one for the last, the last amount, the last payload that we'll have to, that will complete the 4.6 million cubic yards of sand. There is still about $1.8 million in demobilization that we'll have to pay. And then, of course, we, you'll remember, we withheld a 5% contingency to make sure that all those punch list things, once they're completed satisfactorily, then we can release that. I don't anticipate at this time any reason why this project isn't gonna be on, under, it will be done under time and on budget. We've got seven days left of this process, and all indications are that we're gonna finish as we had planned. That takes us up to CSE, what's remaining in their contract. This, this was at your, at your seats for the tonight's meeting. This will show you the 10 tasks that we're in the contract with, with CSE. The first six being completed, that would take us through the bid coordination. We got about $10,000 left in the construction admin portion of this. The $44,000 there in, for the closeout in task number eight, that will be primarily the final report, as well as all the post-nourishment profiles. That again will be, as we'll have to move forward with the maintenance and monitoring, but that'll be the basis for which subsequent profiles will be taken that we'll measure against when we make any claim going forward to FEMA. So, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about how we proceed with that here shortly. And then the other two tasks were added on as amendments from the original contract, one being the turtle monitoring as a condition. We are, we've paid, I think we're down to one monitor at night now. As many, we've had as many as four, depending on where the project was taking place, if they were working in two different sites. And then the environmental monitoring is the BENTICS. So, we, that also, you'll see, there's about $118,000 remaining. And I'll report this to you just to tell you that this will also, all indications, there's no reason to believe that this isn't gonna finish on, as we've budgeted, based on the last amendment. That's, I think, if you have any questions about where we are through the process, I think that'll bring us up to the, to the minute. Also wanted to just briefly touch base on some of the other things that we've been discussing.
Let me stop you for a second. Questions on any of the beach nourishment issues? I've got one or two.
Okay.
Will you go first? Because I...
The environmental monitoring that we're showing up there at $30,000, that doesn't include the contract with CZR, correct?
That is, that is correct. We have completed what's been under contract with CZR. Part of that, part of that payment came out of CSE's original budget. We had to contract the next two quarters, because there's four samples in each, in the post and then, in the pre, and then four in the post, one for each season. We had, we paid, I believe it was $77,000 under contract with CZR, which would've been a half of that pre-sample. But we don't have that indicated here.
That's because this is just CS, which you're saying, CSE?
Correct. That's correct. The, the, the other, it's about $329,000 if we had to do. Both of the posts would have to come out of the contingency, as well as the ocean outfalls.
You mentioned there's 138,000 cubic yards left to put out there.
That's right.
How, how do you handle an overage or an underage? If you don't hit exactly four point, if hitting exactly 4.6 million cubic yards seems like it would be a little difficult.
Very difficult. That, that's the, the, the profiles, the surveys that are taken, they're taking after each section of the beaches is done. So, they're pretty current, and they'll make an adjustment at the very end. We may, we may end up putting more in the last section to get as close to that 4.6 as we can. Very careful, because there is a maximum amount of sand that we can put on the beach that we try and fall just, I mean, the goal is to be just short of that 4.6. So, it just takes constant profiles, surveys to make sure of that. And we can adjust the profile at the very end.
Cliff, I have a question. It relates to the report last month about how much we had lost to date of the 100,000 cubic yards. And my question is, was that 100,000 more predominant in one area of the town than another?
I, I have asked that question. I don't have an answer for, to that question tonight. But the question that I asked of Dr. Connor was to, we have that report as a whole, but to split the difference so that we can answer that question, did we lose more in the northern portion or more in the southern? And I asked him to split that as at, in the, in the reaches. Meaning, tell us what we lost in reach one, and then combine reaches two, three, and four as a whole. I'm sorry, I don't have that answer yet, but I've asked. And, and can have that at our next meeting in, in a different form. And I can try and get it for each reach, but that's how I've asked him to split it.
Well, there's one area that people keep bringing up that seems to be more of a question that we lost than it does throughout the entire town. So, that's why I was asking.
And I think that area is in reach one. It's the area where he, where the project first started, I believe, I think.
You're right.
From Epstein, Enterprise, Forest Street, that, that stretch.
Forest Street north is kinda where, is where I keep getting the questions.
I'll try and pinpoint it down more specific to that area. Maybe that section of reach one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, don't we need that crab to be repaired before we can do our final surveys?
That, they have taken, they have been taking some surveys. Some of the guys have actually been swimming to take some of these surveys. I don't, I don't, well, I'm gonna, do you have an answer to that?
No, but I believe you've got a part coming in for the crab, which will be fixed soon.
It, it's still in a state of disrepair.
It still has a broken leg, is what I understand. And I didn't know if that was, sometimes parts take, you know, six months. I mean, how many times do you need a part for that type of...
Yeah, I don't think that would probably...
I didn't know if we, I don't want us to be late in doing the post survey, and I didn't know if that was going to affect what we're doing. I hate to see them swimming out there at this time of year, just in their wet suits.
We'll make sure that that question is answered at the, at the weekly construction meeting tomorrow. The contingency and the plan for that part and for the crab. Yes, ma'am.
The other thing I wanted to mention is we fell well below the turtle taking, did we not?
We didn't come anywhere near it. We didn't take each single...
That, and, and that just relieves a lot of, I think, the public, the original public concern. Plus, the, I think the BENTIC monitoring is gonna show that those creatures are alive and well.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is, we're just blessed with the engineering company that we had, plus our decision to go with Great Lakes. I think the combination of both of those has been probably the best decisions we made in a long time as a combined group here. And I would just recommend that anyone else that wants to try this project, they need to see Cliff, borrow from us what they can, save them money, and certainly consider those people that we've worked with, because they've been absolutely great to deal with.
That's right.
Thanks.
One more quick question. Sorry. Where's the surveying cost? Where are those costs?
Well, the...
Are they in here? Is that a separate contractor?
No, the, no, that's all part of this construction admin, as well as the, that project closeout, task eight, the, the post-nourishment surveys, it's part of that $44,000. When we, moving forward, that's another question I need to get answered, is how much can we anticipate for all the profiles and surveys that we have to take moving forward as part of our maintenance and monitoring plan? And I, you know, I've been looking at some other alternatives and using some of the, maybe some the universities, look at this as an academic research-type project, and there may be ways to realize some cost savings through CSI or through East Carolina or through any, but that's...
Get some interns?
Graduate assistants and interns. Yes.
Other questions on nourishment, y'all? Thank you, Cliff.
I did wanna say the ocean outfalls. Dave Clark had a conversation with Matt Wood, Representative Wood, with the new DOT rep for District One. Gave him some information and some insight as to the questions and issues and concerns that we have with the outfalls. It's my understanding that Representative Wood and Jerry Jennings, the District One engineer, are gonna, as well as some of the DOT engineers that designed this project, are all gonna sit down and meet on Friday, and hopefully soon thereafter we'll have an answer as to what we can expect for construction for the outfalls. So, that, that is good news. The, we received the final, I'll ask Ralph to help if you have any questions with this. We received the, the final permit that we need from the state for the Vista Colony project. The, the conditions that were placed on that permit are not substantial enough that it will change anything for going out for construction documents and going out to bid. So, I believe that those documents are gonna go out to bid by the end of the week or sometime next week.
No, they'll be out tomorrow. The bids are going out tomorrow. And we're requesting back on the 14th of November to get the bids back.
Excellent. That'd be one neighborhood drainage project that we can get done. We'll start on another one.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
That's great, Ralph.
We have had a lot of discussion with staff, as well as property owners in Carolinian Circle, and we'll have something to report to you at your first meeting in November. We're gonna continue to meet after we've gotten some construction estimates and look at how we can minimize the impact to that neighborhood and get them an improved access while addressing the stormwater needs and concerns. So, we'll have all that ready to summarize. And if there's any action to take, we'll have that at your November meeting. We're moving forward with FEMA. We've got about $377,000 in claims that we'll be making. Staff is working very closely and staying in constant contact and communication with FEMA to make sure that we're crossing all the Ts and Dots and all the Is. And I feel really good about what they've done, and we've got that under control. And I don't have any other...
Most of that debris pickup, Cliff?
About, about half of it, I think. Maybe a little bit less. Is, 150 to 180,000 dollars of that is debris pickup.
Are we, are we getting any requests for KAMA permits that we are not, or that we are, we are concerned about that are not going to be permitted due to storm damage?
I don't, I mean, we're still, you know, the Stinson Cottage that washed in off, right off of Soundside Road is one that, that we've been concerned about and been paying attention to. That's in the review process now for a KAMA major. That application has gone in, so that one we don't know yet. But I don't know of any applications that have...
Been denied.
Been denied.
No, we're working our way through the damage assessment with KAMA and keeping in very close communication with them. Often trying to arrange to meet on site to make sure that property owners are getting the same information. Right now, everybody is in process, and no one has been told a flat-out no. And where permits seem to be a little bit more complicated and beyond what just we can do as local permitting officers of KAMA, we're directing those to the Elizabeth City Office. Such as the Stinson Ranch, which is gonna require a lot more environmental review than, than, you know, it's well above what the local governments can do as LPOs. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Would we know the results of anyone if they were turned down by Elizabeth City?
Well, not right away. I mean, we've, we've asked KAMA to let us know the status of projects. And like I said, we've been trying to keep very close communications with them. But they're not, we're not set up to automatically know...
If they turn something down.
If they turn somebody down. Until they tell us.
Thank you.
How about the beach? Cleaning up the beach?
Cleaning up the beach?
Have we looked into that? I was wondering, I was wondering if teams of people cleaning up the beach. I was wondering, we get teams of people cleaning up the beach? What do you mean?
The debris, the.
Stuff.
Stuff that's laying on the beach.
I should all take care of that. Give it a little time. And Public Works has been out on the beach post-storm and gotten the non-natural items off of the beach. I mean, there was a tremendous amount of grass out there that wasn't touched, but debris, yes, that was, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of peat bogs or tree stumps that I hadn't seen before after this storm, quite a few of those.
But you know, I agree with Doug. We have such a beautiful beach now and so much of it. We need to make a plan to remove what is not natural to be on there.
Right.
And I know all that grass is there and it's sun-slightly, but it does get covered up. I mean, you catch the sand and a lot of it's, you can't see anymore, but there are huge stumps out there. I saw, you know, during the tournament when I was on the beach. But I, I just hate to see washed-up items that are not natural to the ocean stay on the beach. And we need to, we just need to have a long-range plan, Cliff, to, because it is, it's man-hours, it's time.
That's right.
And it's, you know, it's fuel for the trucks that go out there, but I, I just can't let us see this beach become cluttered.
We've got a heck of a lot more beach to clean up.
We have got a lot. I, you know, when I heard the, some of the visitors coming and checking into an area where the beach had been nourished and they said, "Oh, it's so far to walk to the water." I thought, "Oh, give me a break." Well, let me tell you something, it is a long way to walk to the water. I found that out during the tournament. It is a long way from that dune to the water and I am so grateful for every inch of it. So, we do have a lot of beach. I guess I expect Ralph's budget to go up when we start on that process next year, Ralph. We'll understand.
Any questions or comments for the manager?
Now, we'll discuss the beach cleanup later.
Yes, sir. Board of Commissioners' agenda. Mr. Ramal?
No, sir, nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Sadler?
I just, again, this came up at the Tourism Board meeting and I mentioned it the last meeting about the OBX Christmas, the, some of the towns are really getting on a bandwagon and this is a promotion for the entire Outer Banks, including Manio and elsewhere in Dare County. There are many different things that are going to be happening between Thanksgiving and Christmas and I called Cliff the other day to see if, what we might be able to do special in Nagseth to kind of put the spotlight a little bit on us and not all just ducking hill-level hills and Manio.
So I think you were going to talk to Mr. Nettles and find out what we might be able to do and then perhaps do a little more decorating.
At Town Hall.
At Town Hall than we've done in the past. So anyway, just be thinking about anything that we can do to kind of be special for holidays.
Cool. Start getting the Christmas decorations up.
Yeah. Ralph had part of my agenda and I'm going to ask him to finish it up. He wants to say something.
I was just going to cover that. I think they're trying to do something with the fishing peers. Aren't they, aren't they working with the fishing peers?
Well, if they have, they haven't told me. No, I don't know. Tell us about it.
Well, I know Lee was looking into that, working with Jeanette's and some of the private peers also, who are was interested in participating. That would, that would be a neat sight.
Wouldn't it be great to have Christmas lights all up and down, all three of our peers in Nagseth?
It would be if we could afford it, but.
Doesn't the tourism board give brands?
It would be nice even start with one, actually, I guess.
I can just see one of the little lights going out there and trying to find, find the short of the whole string. Mr. Gray?
Just two things briefly. One is, we always talk about what great employees we have. We do. I was with a resident earlier this week that had an accident, was knocked down on the bike path, broke her shoulder and was laying on the bike path and one of our water department employees, John, stopped and helped her and stayed with her until EMS came and then actually helped her get into the ambulance. And she was just quite enthused about that employee and I think John should be recognized for that. That's going above and beyond, it happened in the evening, he happened to be on duty. But to see that and stop says a lot for the caliber of our employees and I just think that that is important to be recognized.
And you can't teach people that either?
No, no, you can't. And the other thing is, I'd like to think for the future is to make people aware that as their tax bills come due, that we will accept payments, that they don't have to wait and pay all at one time, that they can pay so much each month. That was a question that's been asked and that's something we might want to make aware either on our website or as a notation on a water bill or on the tax bill, that payments can be made. I know Dare County does that with theirs and I think that's probably a good idea for us to think about.
Will accept any checks that you send?
We'll take your payment, even if it starts July 1st, at $10, we'll take it, you know, and pay your bill accordingly, but to indicate that we're willing to work, not expect one check all at one time.
Commissioner Kahoon and I had talked about that and we, Robert and I met with Becky Huff, tax collector, and one of the things that we had talked about is there are some, there is some assistance for people that qualify, either senior citizens or income and Becky Huff, we're going to put together, Robert is going to put together a newsletter that, to be mailed out in November and we're going to have a portion that would talk about how we can assist. And Becky's got some tools in her toolbox to assist people, so appreciate you bringing that up and we'll, we'll try and get that word out.
Cliff, just one little notation since we're talking about staff. We do have probably the best staff in our district, not just in Dare County, but I would like to ask, and this is no fault of the Recreation Committee's lengthy report, but I would like to ask that once Carolyn has closed out our agenda and sent us our documents on Friday, that nothing else be accepted after that, even if it has to be pulled, because it is really difficult to get material at the last minute and, and have total comprehension of, you know, the material, so.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. If that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. I've got just a couple of things. I missed, I guess we actually have to have a motion to have a public hearing to consider the recreation plan, so if y'all would.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing at our first meeting in January. Second?
Thank you, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. The second item was, the manager asked if we would like to get an appraisal on the go-kart track piece of property. There's a cost of $2,500. I think that does give us an objective basis for determining, trying to determine a value and I think that's probably the hardest part of those things.
I agree with you.
Motion to authorize the manager to contract for an appraisal for the go-kart, go-kart property as identified on Virginia Dare Trail.
That took, see, $2,500?
Where the $2,500 figure comes from?
You got a quote. That's a cheap, that's an inexpensive commercial appraisal on portion one.
Really?
Yeah. Those commercial guys are. Yeah. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. And lastly, we've got, it's Tourism Board time appointment again. Dare County does request that we submit three nominees. I think we've done two in the past. I would like to propose that Commissioner Sadler continue her service on there. I think you're eligible for another two years, I believe.
I think so.
And I'd like the board to agree to submit your name. If we have to, if we are forced to submit a second name, I will put my name up there, but I will tell them that I am not taking it.
I think our incoming chairman is sitting here from the Tourism Board. He may have something to say about that, but I, you know, it is up to, ultimately up to our Dare County Board of Commissioners and I would just say, it would be a pleasure for me to serve this town again in that capacity if the commission so allows me to do. And if they want someone else to be on there, it'll just bounce back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Bounce right back.
It's all on your shoulders.
Bounce right back. No, I feel kind of strongly that we, the town deserves that opportunity to choose who represents them and I think you've done a good job, of course, these last two years.
Thank you.
And then I'll make that as a motion to nominate Anna for the Tourism Board. Motion is second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Yeah, I think I covered all my loose ends. Is there any further business to come before us this evening? Entertained a motion for adjournment?
Certainly.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. And we are adjourned.